Call me in the order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Meeting with renters for water agreements is the first item on our agenda. Looks like we have no renters. Amendments to the agenda?
Sir, I have one tonight. Under executive session, real estate contracts under 1 VSA 313 A1.
Okay. Do I have a motion to add that in?
I make a motion, yeah. I'll second that.
Okay. All favor? Aye. Okay, we add that. Approval of the minutes from July 9. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussions, comments, errors, submissions? All those in favor? Aye. Five minutes for public comment. John?
Mr. Charles, do you remember during the evening where I was speaking with Mr. Bruno at the back of his truck? And I attempted to speak with you, but you abruptly snapped at me and walked away. I was attempting to point out the fact that the town lied to the court claiming that it was the highest winning bidder act in November 2022. We sat in this very room with Herbert Durfee, former town manager of the Williamson Tax Chamber, and took his deposition where he raised right hands under oath and said the town never made a motion to bid, never appointed an acting agent to bid on the town's behalf, and the town never formally bid at the 31814 tax center. Now, in November of 2022, the town's attorney claims that the town was the highest winning bidder. My question is, who is lying?
Any other comments? You're not going to get a response. This is your chance to make a comment. Any other public comment? Yes, Glenn?
I have a question, please. A few weeks ago, during the, I guess it was the executive session, there was a cut for personnel. And again, tonight is executive session for personnel. Although I don't know in particular what personnel, I did mention a while ago, our question a while ago, what is the status of Mr. Gunter's contract? Is there an answer? Because I know that he came in February of 2018, and it's a three-year contract renewal.
So your question is, what's the status of the town manager's contract?
Right, has it been renewed?
The town manager has a contract.
Was that ratified during the open meeting?
I can tell you that it's, check the minutes. When the contract was accepted, we came out of executive session and with that decision made. It's in the minutes. I don't have it in front of me, Glenn.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Glenn?
Thanks for changing my side of the door.
It's honest. I thought about that way here, didn't I? Thanks for bringing it to our attention. Yes, Glenn?
Another, I do have old business, new business, other old business. We had mentioned earlier at the special meeting from the general election about open house upstairs in the public. Since there's been all kinds of grants, a million dollars, et cetera. And now we have the new rector director. And Mr. Richardson, you had mentioned there was some clutter up here, and that was the town, the only incentive. I've seen that there's been some progress moving the clutter out. My question, well, my complicated question, first of all, has the upstairs been approved for the second phase of construction by the Brooklyn State, well, the State Fire and Marshals of Brooklyn?
I'm trying to, I hear your comment, but I'm not sure I know what you're asking.
Perhaps Mr. Gunter can clarify this because I know that the State Fire and Marshals was over here to visit him and go through the building. The construction upstairs is, well, any project, there's various stages. Pre-planning, take the walls down, do what you have to do, have an inspection, put the walls back up. My question is, with respect to upstairs, particularly the very large room for which the Peter Welch, the money was targeted in the recent two, has that area, because Mr. Gunter did say that he was fully permitted at one of the meetings here. My question is, has the second phase of that project, the live room and in fact the entirety of it, but particularly the live room, has that been approved for construction or has that been gotten?
Thank you for your comment.
Now, could you answer that? That was a question. That was a question, and I'm asking for a response, please.
It was, but looking at the agenda, it's five minutes for public comment. Thank you for your comment.
I am not over my five minutes. I'm waiting for you to answer on your time. Are you evading the question because you know where it's going?
There's, again, I don't think anyone's trying to be evasive, Glenn. We have, we have, my understanding is, we had a project upstairs, and we've closed, we've closed out the majority of the project. When you're, this comment you're making about a second phase and everything, I don't know how that applies, but we, but.
Because when upstairs, if it wasn't finished, when up there with the fire department and the historical society, it wasn't done, obviously. The clutter has now been moved, so I'm asking about the construction with the, and I know my five minutes is running out. But with respect to the Peter Welch specific targeted grant, that was avoided, but there's no progress upstairs, so that the children and the new rector director and the community can use upstairs.
My understanding on that, now I think I understand what you're asking. We had a meeting a while back where historical society, fire department, they're still, I was just talking to one of the officers in the fire department, and they're still working that out. So there's nothing new to report.
No, not with respect to what happened, not with respect to who's going to use what, because upstairs, there's nothing ready to use, because all Mr. Gunter is being evasive, and maybe very likely, my comment, which in fact is a question that he didn't answer. I believe the answer to the question, how self-answer to some extent, that the State Fire and Marshals of Brooklyn, particularly the electrical inspector, fire inspector, plumbing inspector, that second phase of the contract, of the construction, sorry, hasn't even been permitted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for your comment. Any other, any other comments? Roseanne?
So, I actually have two questions. What? First of all, I've had several people ask me if the electric stations over here, are they, are they working now?
The car charging, the charging stations that we have there?
Yes, I'm sorry, I haven't built a proper.
They're not working yet, no.
They're not?
They got to go through state recs first.
I had clients ask me, so I just wanted to get an answer on that. Is there a, is there an anticipated target date? Thank you, target date, that's a good word.
I don't have one, but I can get it through. Yeah, I talked to them yesterday, Monday.
Now, they have diggers and stuff over there, over by the cannon and everything. What was all that about?
Recently?
Yeah, like last week.
It was for the EV station.
There were any electrical problems, and followed by the Mercados, going to help down the road.
That's on you, sorry.
John?
Is the town going to file for quiet title concerning any of the properties at 5, 7, 16, 18, or 24 Wooders Street, which is one of the things we asked more than seven years of frivolous lawsuits that you guys portrayed us as being frivolous, because your deeds aren't worth picking that we're written on?
Thank you for your comment. We're moving on now to department head reports.
Please look at me. Also, we'll start with the police department. PD has 29 traffic for municipal, municipal violations, six written warnings, and they had four car crashes in the last couple of weeks. We did seven sets of civilian fingerprints. From the manager's office, we're still waiting on that education tax rate to come down from the state. Should be this week. I was hoping for today so we could do it tonight, but we're not that lucky. In attempt to increase revenue, Mike did sell another tanker of water last week. Thank you, Mike, for doing that. I spoke to, and this has been an issue we've had in town for a couple of years now, the water, the stormwater issue over on Airport Road. When it rains heavy, you know, underneath the BIDOC there, it'll flood out. So we finally got the state to take some action on that. They said, I talked to Brian over at District 3, and he said they have a plan, they're short-staffed. So that's on their agenda to take care of. They didn't give me a target date, though.
This is the state?
State, yeah, state of Vermont, VTран. Oh, on the table, the state also sent over Class 1 paving for downtown. For those that are concerned about state paving downtown Fairhaven, we are asking them to pave at night, and they have agreed to do nighttime paving. So that was a big point of contention last time it came through. We're having to do that this time. Project worksafe, we're wrapping all of those up. Dan Gray's coming in, he's going to check out a little bit of electrical work in the clerk's office, but that is coming to a close as well. Paving, our fiscal year '24 and '25 paving is complete, both of those years. If you're down by Cedar Grove, you see the guys, they're finally putting in some new posts down there. It's been a couple of years since those posts needed to be replaced, and we finally just buckled down.
Down at the cemetery?
Yeah, down at the cemetery, we buckled down and bought some and are putting those up. We thanked DPW, they cleaned the fountain and replaced that pump that was grinding away. And lights in the park are working. If anybody, so if anybody was watching, watching Peg TV, if you drive by and you see, hey, one of those lights are out, it's not that the light's out, it's that half of the, half of the lights are on one circuit, half of the lights are on another circuit. So as the sun comes up, one, one set of lights will come on or off at a different time is all. So the system's working, it's just on two separate circuits, so they'll pop on all at different times. And that's all I have.
Questions on Joe's report? The Class 1 paving, did they give you a potential date?
2026.
They didn't give me a hard date.
2026?
Six.
Rose?
You, for that paving, what you're talking about, this Main Street paving?
Downtown, middle of town.
And that was 2026? Speaking of the town, I just had to tell you, I was walking over towards Park, through crosswalks towards Park, and it comes out right at that one path that goes right to the fountain. And this was this morning, yesterday morning, this morning. I got to tell you, it was pretty gorgeous. The water and the fountain, and it just, it was, and it was drained by the tree. It would, it, we really have one of the most gorgeous towns ever.
Morning.
Morning.
Okay, moving right along, under old business, we have Munger Road reclassification.
So we're back to Munger Road. We had a meeting in June, maybe, that wasn't well-attended. So we want to do it again in August, on August 23, at 9:00 a.m., let me make sure I got the right time, 9:30 a.m. down at the airport. This letter is to warn the planning commission that the board select will want to do that with Munger Road, or reclassify Munger Road.
Do you need more?
And it's August, what date?
23rd.
9:30 in the morning, that's a Friday?
That's a Friday, and that's right at the Red Gate, right there by the Kendall's property.
Are you looking for a motion? Do I have a motion to sign the letter warning that the planning commission, that there's going to be a meeting?
I'll make a motion we do so. I'll second that.
Questions?
What is the present classification, and what is it going to be classified as Munger Road?
Present classification, see if I'm right or wrong, is a trail to be reclassified to a Class 4. There was some discussion in the past over whether it got, it wasn't always a Class 4. It got changed somehow around 2016 to a trail, and now it's putting it back to a Class 4.
Which, what does that mean in terms of the town's responsibilities? It's not going to plow, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is it going to be graded, is it going to, are there going to be coves installed?
It'll be maintained just like the rest of our Class 4, we'll make sure that there's no, you know, it'll be passable.
There's a big tree down in there right now.
There's a big tree sitting there.
Okay.
Yep, good. Any other question? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Under new business, we have unlicensed dog report.
So per state statute, the town clerk has to let the select board know about the unlicensed dogs in the town, and that's what this is. It looks like the clerk did let the police department know, and they will be doing their best to contact folks and get them to register their animals.
Yes. So this is more of just to let us know, there's no decision-making?
I mean, I guess you could make a motion to accept it.
To accept it, okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the town clerk's unlicensed dog report and warrant.
I'll second that.
You gotta make a motion.
You make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Can we do so?
There's nothing to say.
Seems like they've done a really good job by getting this list down.
Every year we try.
Got a question for discussion?
How many dogs are on the unlicensed dog report?
Please note, there are 58 dogs which were registered in 2023 that have not renewed their registrations.
Is there a fine for having an unlicensed dog?
I'm pretty sure.
There's a, there's a late fee or something, it's posted on the window there. I don't know exactly what it is, can't remember, but it is posted.
Is there a visa fine?
There, there.
It's a late, I think it says a late fee or something.
Late fee or something, man. What I've seen, because they've done some already, the police department's pretty good to go talk with them, and you go get your dog registered, and that's all really looking to do, to make it happen, make sure. It's important, what brought a lot of this up to, besides the fact that it has to be done, is we had a couple of dog bites that the dogs weren't registered and didn't have the rabies shots. And the reason you register is for health and safety. It's just not, it's not this, we've got to have money, it's for health and safety. So, all those in favor? Aye. Record will show that this, oops. Under new business, we have planning commission appointments.
So first, we'd like to thank Lorraine Brown decided she wanted to step down from the planning commission. And I think we should thank Lorraine Brown for her service, it's really an unforgiving position. So thank you, Lorraine.
She did a great job.
And I was speaking with Ms. Sinkowitz, Linda Sinkowitz, and she is interested in joining, rejoining the planning commission if the board approves her.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Linda Sinkowitz has been on the planning commission before. Things got a little busy in her life, and she stepped down for a while, but she would be interested in coming back. So I'll entertain a motion to.
I'll make a motion, we accept her back on us committee.
Linda Sinkowitz back on the planning commission?
I'll second that.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Revenue efforts discussion.
Nothing solid right now. I did reach out to the folks over at Leeson Road to kind of get a sense of how they manage their transfer station, because they get a lot more traffic than we ever would. And I hopefully will bring a proposal to the board at the next meeting.
Okay. Anything else, anyone else?
You know, I've kind of had conversations about the park, and I've done a little research. There really isn't a whole lot in the state that charges that, and if they do, it's like $10 for a year, like Burlington. And so I know there's kind of other discussions, and but talking with one of them, feel like we need to focus on some other ordinances, get those. So I don't know if we start going over ordinances and figure out how to enforce them, or get rid of them.
Well, I didn't, last year, we were going through policies and working our way through policies. And so if we're, if we feel caught up, maybe it's almost time to talk about an ordinance.
This is the time of year, since we're slow, this is the time of year I bring policies, ordinance up. But we've been blowing through the meetings, it's been nice to get home at.
Right.
Not 11 o'clock.
No, I get that, but it seems that we have a lot of ordinances and stuff that aren't enforceable or maybe out of date, and maybe it's time to take a look at some of those if we want to. And that's been my biggest complaint, we spend all that money on the parking lot, and it drives me absolutely bonkers every morning when I go to work and seeing it filled up with tenants' parking, and it's pretty much that way. And I'm sure you know, they pick, take the prime parking, and they're there pretty much 24/7. We've got this motorcycle that's been over here for weeks. You know, we're not, we're not the parking lot.
And sometimes I feel, feel free, if you see an ordinance, to bring that, and bring that specific to talk about. We'll talk, Joe, get down the agenda so that we can warn it and people. Like, for example, the Economic Development Committee is still working on the junk, garbage, and length of grass ordinance we have. So we'll be, we'll be coming back, we're still a couple of months away from having the existing ordinance, or rewrite of that, or tweaking it a little bit.
So you want me to bring the parking ordinance up at the next meeting?
Yeah, because I would like to see something done about that, I don't know. And I know you mentioned some business owners were potentially interested in creating off-street parking, so it'd be nice to clear that parking lot up and get those tenants out of town parking spaces and let our businesses and people that want to come spend money here have prime.
Where else would they have a place to park though?
It would require some, some work at looking at what the alternatives, it's all going to, it's all going to cost money. There's no question about it. But let's, you start somewhere, let's.
Right. Right, you know, like I noticed, if you actually extend the bait parking lot, like the private, where the employees park, it looks like there's a lot of dead space out there. I mean, what's it to add another 30, 40 feet of gravel, and here, here's your parking?
Those you own.
I don't, I don't know, that's, I haven't had a chance to come up here to talk with Joe more about it.
I don't remember exactly which meeting it was, but John, he had come up with an idea. Where Maple Street, the gambling, goes between, and then when it, it goes between, and then it cuts directly to the right, and then it goes out further. And he had made a suggestion about maybe taking the park that cuts to the right and making a parking lot out of that, force the tenants to use. And I was just wondering if anybody had looked into feasibility of that.
Pretty much just kind of dead end Maple Street and just extend that out, extend the parking area out to where the, Maple Street would. Obviously, you're going to have to create a fill all that.
Yeah, I'm good, I mean.
That would give you an extra 15-point space.
Right, and I think there's what, maybe 10 cars over there?
Yeah.
Unless somebody brings in extra vehicles, but.
It's one-way anyway, so it's not a high-traffic road.
It's supposed to be one-way.
Well, yeah.
I mean, there's, that's a.
Do you know from experience?
Yeah, I watch them go down it all the time.
But also, if you're talking that it's privately owned, it's not owned by the town?
We're talking about the street.
Oh, you're talking, you're talking.
About the street.
Cut the street right off.
Make the, make the street into parking.
Yes.
Just get on the street and bring in fill to extend the parking lot out.
I mean.
I would like to see something, because I, you know, that was one of the biggest, one of the reasons we killed the other side of the project is there was not enough parking. And I know we added six spots, but when we went to the lumberjack show a couple of weeks ago, I mean, there was, we had a hard time finding parking. And when you've got half your lot taken up by tenants, where does that leave people that are coming to enjoy events, you know?
Yep.
John, so you're going to be careful, if you start pushing people to park in places that, you know, are further away, the demand of moving, which is also going to hurt revenue, is tax-based. I mean, you have one without the other.
Right, but the way I look at it, too, is that we're not the landlords. Realistically, I feel like the business owners are the ones responsible for providing parking for the tenants, not the town.
I respect that, I'm at the same time.
I think in, with some of our past experience of, let's, let's get it on the agenda so the people who, if I have a business owner with some strong feelings, they can come in and be part of the discussion. It's a good place to start, all good ideas. We can't go wrong.
Well, I definitely would not go beat up tenants because you're going to push people out of their neighborhood, which is opposite of what we're trying to do, and you guys have been trying to do.
Sure. Good. All right, anything else under revenue discussion? Okay, that was good, good discussion. Parking lot.
Unintended?
Mm-hmm.
Unintended?
Right, right, perfectly right, right in line with what we're talking about. I don't see, the transfer station, we're looking on a proposal there, Downtown Village. If Bob was here, would say that the planning commission is, it's on their list to do. And DPW salt garage, not, no work has happened on that, but we need, need to look at it, but nothing new, right?
Nothing new.
Board roundtable, Rich, what do you have?
I don't really have much tonight. I did take note that somebody trimmed up the tree on the corner today in the bar. It needed a real haircut, and it got it. That's a great thing. It's getting pretty bad. So I appreciate that.
What tree is that?
The one with the big leaves on it, what do you call them, a silver maple or a, whatever? Right here at the park.
By the.
Inside the park?
I don't know, it's out of the book.
There's a name for it, I just don't want to reveal it. But I take notice, things are getting done, and I appreciate it.
So, bring up again line painting down here at the bottom hill. I know, I think I brought it up beginning of June about the painting schedule, and been told that it's got pushed off because we were waiting for the state to pave. And I know from experience, paint doesn't last long, so now we're in the new fiscal year. Is there any plan to get the DPW to paint lines? Because I almost got hit down there the other morning, because nobody knows where the lines are to turn into River Street. There's, there's no markings left, pretty much when you get down by Durfee's, and before you start up the hill, there's no markings, there's no. markings, there's no, not, you don't even know where the lane is anymore. I mean, it would be nice, if we get some warm weather and get DPW to throw some paint on it. And I think, too, that'd be a nice, wind's not the right word, but showing the town people that we are trying to make improvements, so that'd be something...
Definitely would be better.
Something that, I think's been long overdue, and that's something I hear a lot of complaints about is from multiple people, is getting that painted.
So, we're on the state contract to get that done? I can ask Public Works to do that, but that would be an enormous waste of money, so...
I thought the state was only doing the center line, not that, but they're not, I'm talking about the white, the turning lanes and the fog lines and...
You have a right turn lane, or excuse me, the left turn lane.
Yep.
Going down to Liberty Street and, and River Street.
You can't see them.
There's been gone.
There aren't any more.
There's been gone for years.
It has been gone for years, yeah.
And I, you don't even know where the white lines are supposed to be either.
If, if the board wants me to, I can have that done. It's not gonna be professional. It's not gonna look good. It's, it's gonna look bad.
Something, I mean, we do it once a year down Poland, it's not...
The state comes through, can they do it?
Yes, we're on the list. Like, I, I get the frustr, I hear your frustration. I hear the frustration. We, there's only one company that's doing this work in this area, and that's why we're back, that's why we're sitting back. We're back on the list. So, we're on the list, Jim has a contract with these people, we're just trying to get them.
Right, but that's for the center line, not for the turn.
For the center line, that's for, well, we're gonna piggyback on that and have them do the turn lane and do the rest of it.
Can we, and, don't take this the wrong way, but all I hear people saying is that we have a safety concern of how lack of any striping down there. Can we, not looking...
For perf, yeah.
But I'm, I'm looking for someone, when's the last time we were on the phone with the state saying, "Look, we've got a major safety problem. I want someone out here from V-Trans, we'll go for a walk, and you tell me why." I see them painting on every off-ramp and around here. They've, they've got the painters here. I don't know if we're making enough noise to get them here to do the job, because like anyone else, if the squeaky wheel always gets the oil, we're, we're not squeaking enough, in my opinion.
V-Train painted all, all real forward.
Well, in the last week.
Went all, went all around and didn't do downtown. That's not acceptable. Who do, who do we need to get after?
Let's, Mr. Green, what are you doing tomorrow? Do you want to sit in and have a meeting with V-Trans?
I'll try. I don't know when, when the meeting is, but I'll try. I mean, it's just, it's just that they're, they're here painting, you know, we just, we gotta try to pin them down a, a date at least. It would help.
Yeah.
So, what I'll do, I'll have DPW go out and stripe everything.
Yeah, I mean, painting won't last a year anyways, if it, something's, it's better than nothing. So, we go around and do it once a year in Poland, right?
What I'm thinking, Joe, is if we could, if we could pin them down to a, a date, approximate date of when they can complete it for us, then we would know, we could be able to...
Whether we should...
Let this come in our way. Now, we don't know if it's coming our way.
It's, it's coming.
And when's the last time, when's the last time that's been touched?
Christmas, yeah, Christmas is coming, too. I, I'm, I'm sorry. V-Trans is one where, I don't know why we're stepping like we're on eggshells, going around the way we've been treated by them, which I think is terrible, quite frankly.
Right, except I get, I get a lot of complaints. I've been hit, almost been hit multiple times, because nobody knows where you're supposed to be. Half the time, I'm over and on the edge, because people don't know where they're supposed to be.
We have a thing, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
I don't have...
There's some, sorry.
Wait, wait.
We don't see you, Roseanne.
One more time, go ahead.
I'm sorry, but the last time that we had one of these big companies paint, Joe, didn't they screw it up at the top of the hill, or maybe, they'd forgotten to do the top of the hill, or they'd forgotten to do down by River Street, they'd forgotten to do one of them. And then they were going to come back, but it was gonna be like so long in the future that we, it was, I swear that the last time that we were having, we had those...
I understand.
Lanes painted.
I understand what Joe's saying, that we don't paint lines very well. I don't make that, I don't, but you gotta, you don't, we know, I mean, the last time I remember down there, we had a line going down there, you thought it was, something was wrong. But that was us, that wasn't V-Trans that did it.
I heard you do it.
That, that, we don't...
I think it was just the fact that it was a really cheap paint that did last, what, like six months?
No, paints don't. We paint, we paint every year in Poland, and it lasts, lucky to get a year out of it.
I love the stuff that I believe, if I remember correctly, it was super painted and just washed away and ran.
But, wait, point, I don't want to beat a dead horse, Joe. Point, point taken. We just need to get some line striping done.
It'll be done this week.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Moving, moving on to reviewing the financial report. I'll need a motion in a second for...
I'll read the numbers. That's on a different piece, basically.
Uh, payroll is forty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-two cents.
Make a motion, we pay that.
I'll second it.
Questions, comment? All those in favor? Aye. Warrant for a hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-seven cents.
Make a motion, we pay that.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have an additional fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-four, warrant of sixty thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-three cents.
Make a motion, we pay that.
I'll second that.
And that, I think, Joe, we're, we're just catching up the stuff that's coming through from fiscal year twenty-four.
Stuff that was in June got, you know, invoices, re-invoice, and all the pain.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our checkbook status, we're not in the negative anymore, so that's good. Our checkbook status is eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and six cents.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
Yeah, I highly is wrong, I'm just, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, now I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for Personnel 1 VSA 313A1 and Real Estate Contract 1 VSA 313A1.
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
Rich, be, I'll second it.
Okay, you know what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.